Please join me, Falia Flitch. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Rocco, please.
Councilmember Jacobowski.
Here.
Councilmember Taut.
Here.
Councilmember Udi.
Here.
Vice Mayor Shepard Romney.
And Mayor Wong.
Here. The agenda is posted seventy-two hours prior to each meeting at the following locations: City Hall, the Pro Library, and the Recreation Department, and it's also posted on the CD website. The CD welcomes public input, members of the public address the CD Council by completing a public comment card and give it to the CD clerk prior to the meeting. At this time, the public may address the CD Council on items that are not on the agenda. Pursuant to the state law, the CD Council may not discuss or take action on issues not on the meeting agenda. I reserve the right to place three-minute limits on the duration of comments. Staff may be asked to follow up on each item: new business, presentation of fiscal year 2020, department operational expenditure. I'm sorry, public comments? I need a public comment.
He needed to pause.
Yeah. Any public comment? Do I see any public? Nope. Okay, all right. New business.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, good evening. I know that it feels like we were just here, mostly because we were just here. This is the third of three special budget meetings that we set up to hear the departmental presentations at a high-level altitude. We can have discussions after the budget process is over about whether having these three separate meetings worked for you or whether you'd like to consolidate them a little bit more. I have mixed feelings. It seems like quite a lot of meetings, on the other hand. It was nice to not have to get through a whole thing in one meeting. So I'll be interested in your feedback once this piece is over. Just as a reminder, we are here to hear presentations from the final two departments. That is, Planning and Building will go first, and then Parks and Public Works will go second. And again, just a reminder about how we got to this place. We have presented to you some options for priority initiatives, and you made some initial selections. So you'll see those incorporated into the budget presentations that you'll see today. Other than that, the direction that staff received from me was to have no discretionary increases in the budget at all for the operating budget whatsoever this year. So everything that you see in the budgets for cost increases include non-discretionary increases such as CALPERS, already negotiated step increases, increases in postage, the sorts of things that we don't have any control over. Or you will see cost increases that are related to priority initiatives that you are interested in seeing move forward. So again, just as a reminder, you will not be seeing any discretionary increases from us today. And so we will look forward to some feedback from you, again, in general, about what the presentations are from each of the two departments. Our Finance Director has put together some additional information for you and wants to set the stage again as we have been doing. So without any further ado, I will turn the meeting over. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. There are two handouts that will be distributed here, and we'll wait until those are distributed. All right, you see.
Thank you.
Okay, the first handout that I was going to cover very briefly is the one that's entitled "Save San Marino Fiscal 1920 Operating Budget." You'll see on this I've just updated it for two things. One, I updated it to include the police, fire, and emergency management budgets that you reviewed at your last meeting. And on the flip side, I updated the funding sources for those four departments that received funds besides the general fund. So it names the actual funding source for those four departments. So that's just an update of that sheet. The other sheet that I'll draw your attention to and I'll go into a little bit more explanation is the one entitled "Additional Information Regarding Personnel Costs." I put this together in response to questions from the council last meeting. The first item is, there was a request about the total city payroll is. That number is seventeen point six million in terms of the total personnel costs, salaries, and benefits combined. That's where the budget has been put together for fiscal nineteen twenty at this point. That includes all position changes that relate to priority initiatives as well as other departmental recommendations. There was another question on what is the cost of step increases. I went through, and each budget identified the number of individuals that are due for a prospective step increase. In other words, as of right now, that increase has not taken place, but during the coming year it's expected. And I costed those out there for you and indicated the number of employees by department. You'll see that the total cost estimated is about $129,000, and the number of employees involved are 28, which represents a little over one-fourth of the total full-time, number of full-time employees of the city. And then the third item, although I see it's numeral two, it should be numeral three. It's the third item, is PERS cost increases. And here I've summarized for you the increases for both the PERS normal costs, which is the ongoing annual costs as people earn pension, and the amortized actuarial liability, which is really the increase in the amortization of that unfunded actuarial liability. And that, of course, is to pay for past services depending on how the actual interest rates have occurred as opposed to what was originally projected. And you'll see that that's where the bulk of the cost is. It's over $400,000. This relates to the amortization of the unfunded actuarial liability, or about eighty percent of the total increase. Now, I did want to mention that these two numbers, $129,000 for step increases and $511,000 for PERS cost increases, if you add those two together, you're going to get about $640,000. But if you were to add up all the individual budgets that I gave you or that we gave you over the past three meetings, you'll see the numbers don't quite line up. And in particular, I'll highlight, if you took the cost of step increases of $129,000 and just the increase in the normal costs, that's a total of about $190-some thousand. The sum of all the department budgets that indicated numbers for the increase in step increases and normal pension costs was more like $400,000. So what's the difference? Well, the major, the single largest reason for the difference is that in the Police Department budget and in the Fire Department budget, you'll notice I mentioned that there were special pays that have not been budgeted in the past. So that's one reason. In terms of the presentation of the departments, the cost of special pays was included in that number, whereas for this purposes, I've taken it out. And the cost of special pays is over half of that difference, about $110,000, for both the pay itself as well as the benefits that relate to the pay that are percentage-based, like PERS, Medicare. The other major, second largest factor causing that difference is the way we have chosen to budget part-time employees in the budget. Part-time employees have a three-step salaries range, and we've chosen to budget those positions at C-step. So that's a cost of about $40-some, $45,000. The balance is primarily due to step increases that have already occurred since the last time the budget was put together. So a year ago, the budget was based, I assume, on actual salaries at the time and maybe some anticipated step increases. But when we looked at actual salaries today, some of those are different from actual salaries that occurred a year ago. So those were step increases that were already built in and already given. And so that's another reason why the departmental presentation is a little different than today's summary presentation. So I know it's a long-winded answer to try to explain the variances, but I'd be happy to try to answer any of the additional questions you have.
Any question?
If you could just help me on one issue. One of the questions I had asked in the step increases was the number of employees who had reached the highest step level. So I see that there are seventy-five if we remove the 28 who are due for increases. However, that would be a combo of, I guess I'm asking this question, would that then be a combo of at-will employees and those who've reached the max?
Yes, because at-will employees likewise have a range, and those at-wills that were at the top would be included in the seventy-five. And those at-wills that are not in the top of their range would be in the 28.
So overall, it's really only 28 employees still involved with increasing steps?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have no questions.
Councilmember Udi?
A lot to digest, would have been nice to get this in advance.
I have questions about two of the numbers. When I'm doing the math in two of the categories, that's Rec Department and Police with what we approved, I don't have those as matching what the request was, this proposed on these two, on your summary versus what's in the request. And so I know the Rec Department did have a slight difference because I think that was where we were considering the Wellness Initiative, and we didn't do that, so that's just a $6,000 change. But I get for the Rec Department, if you put their two numbers together of their requests, a number that's, well, I can tell you what the difference is. I was trying to do it while... My number is $1,948,332, and it's still listed as, well, either way, it's listed as 1,000... I'm sorry. A million! It's tough enough trying to find a parking, and I'm still in the red. But let's not focus on that. So, okay, $1,948,332 is what I got from adding their section together. And I know that it would be $6,000 lower than that because we took out the Wellness Initiative. But our, this council review, the requested and council review operating budget, which you're handing out, still has that number off quite a significant amount of money, over $140,000.
You're right. Thank you for pointing that out. It appears to be an error, and I'll fix it the next time.
Okay. Likewise, with the Police, I have an error there. I believe after we approved the staff changes as requested, we're listing it as $6,814,000, $102,400, and it's 6,906,102. So perhaps I have the math wrong, or did we not approve everything that was? I have a greater number as well, by about $100,000. And I just want to make, if we're going to operate off of these, I think these should be most accurate and reflect the decisions. Even if we have the requested and the reviewed, I understand, we went down in one, but I don't think, even if you just slide over the number for the Police, it was too low to start with.
I agree. I think I, my sense is that I put these numbers together before I looked at the final version, so yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Vashir. I'll ignore further questions.
I do have an observation. I'm just kind of playing with the numbers. For the council's reference point, the increase in the budget from last year to the budget or the request from this year is $1,004,000. And of that, the steps and the PERS is 640,000, so we still have net increase expenses of $760,000.
And that is a priority initiative?
I tapped the priority initiatives. Is that much money? I'm just pointing that out there for us to be aware of.
So there are several other things that went up this year that are not related to priority initiatives and yet not related to PERS and the automatic step increases. Some of those are contractual increases that we saw as we went along the way. Some of them are the ways that numbers were calculated last year. We're not correct, and we're correcting that in this year's budget. So...
Insurance, liability insurance.
Insurance, again, all of the non-discretionary costs. So again, this was last week when I said, although I gave direction, this is a maintained budget, that doesn't mean that there isn't going to be an increase, and so this is what some of those are. So the biggest component, of course, as Councilmember Udi is mentioning, are the things that are associated with the actual increases of step increases, pension increases, and so forth. Then there's some personnel number corrections that needed to be done. That's another set of the increases. And then all of the contractual increases that are going up, including the workers' comp and general liability, as Councilmember Taut indicated, those are all things that are going up that are separate from the priority initiatives. The distinction I wanted to draw is that there's no request for new money that's generated by us that was at our discretion.
With the exception of two new police officers.
That was related to a priority initiative that you voted for. Imagine personally.
I'll argue over that later.
All right. So if there are further questions for the Interim Finance Director, I would just close out by saying, again, we are presuming that Councilmember Udi is facilitating this conversation about the budget. And when we are finished with this item, we will be done with the operational presentations for each department, which means that the next time that we get together, we will be talking about the capital improvement plan. And I will just want to get a sense from you all. I've started to get some feedback that there's a little bit of concern about how long that meeting might go. It is quite a lot of items, and as you know, the CIP is almost entirely discretionary. So there is much more wiggle room, lots of room for conversation, and that is the meeting that went particularly late last year. And so I just want to have a quick conversation with you all about whether you want to leave that as one meeting. At the moment, it's scheduled for your April Friday meeting with nothing else on that agenda. Or if you'd like to maybe divide that up into two meetings, and we can figure out ways to do that as well so that exhaustion doesn't set in. But we can talk about that at the very end. So thank you very much. We will turn the meeting over to Councilmember Udi and Planning and Building Department to kick this off.
You know, what might be interesting is to get a schedule of any increase that's greater than $10,000. Because we talked about workman's comp and insurance and things like that so we can build a bridge to that $760,000.
Allo, you're on deck.
Yes, thank you, Council. The mission of the Planning and Building Department is to preserve the comforts of the community, our neighborhoods, and our natural resources. The primary responsibilities of the department include the fields of planning buildings, building and safety, code enforcement, business license, and tree preservation. With the nine full-time equivalent staff in the department, we manage a variety of tasks such as the issuance of building permits, business license permits, tree permits, perform building and zoning inspections, draft code amendments, which is considered the long-range planning activities, and manage the public hearing process for both the ZAM review and the planning commission. Some highlights for the current fiscal year include the launching of the citywide historic survey, the adoption of the following ordinances: the tree preservation ordinance, home occupations, the prohibition on smoke shops, the basement ordinance, and the construction maintenance ordinance. Although not yet presented, the staff has completed the drafts of the wireless ordinance, which will include the ride-away wireless ordinance, the livable area ordinance, which is what we label the balcony ordinance, and the unoccupied residential ordinance. Also in the works is the lead and safety ordinance, which will help to ensure the protection of the housing stock, which is older than 1972, with contained lead in them. Although the department's operating budget remains consistent, there are a few increases and decreases that have been mentioned by staff. And they include personnel costs, which are mainly due, we did see a reduction in personnel costs this year, mainly due to the vacancy of our city senior planner, as well as not filling the part-time code enforcement officer at this point, although that is still in the works. I do want to point out that I did look at a few efficiencies in terms of costs within the budget. One example is we issued vehicle decals to construction workers. Those decals are very expensive through this one vendor. So one of the decals, for example, we were spending close to $500 to buy these decals. And what I have done is I went to Amazon and found this similar decal for 30 bucks. So constantly looking for ways to save the city funds. Another example is in our materials and supplies, we're at 50% expended. Normally, we're at a high 80% expended, so that is purchasing paper, pencils, that kind of thing. The reason why the cost is so low is because we're doing a lot of electronic communication, getting away from actual hard copies. A few of the increases with personnel are related to workers' comp, as was mentioned prior. The significant increase to personnel is related to a priority initiative, which is looking to incorporate an analyst to help the department with facilitating the economic development program. The cost associated with that is a little over $36,000. The cost for services and supplies also, does appear to be under expended. This is largely due to several planned expenditures that have not been fully executed. One example of that is the citywide historic survey. The current balance on that is a little over $150,000, which will carry over to the new fiscal year to complete that project. The other program is the PFAL program, which we've expended about $7,000 to date. That line item total is $38,000. There are also several increases associated with inflation with a variety of our software programs that we have. The current plan for the fiscal year does not include moving the PFAL program over to the fiscal year. Again, that's a line item of $38,000. As I mentioned, we've only expended $7,000 of that. In terms of knowing what those numbers look like, that's approximately 35 PFAL to date. We have seven weeks remaining in that program. I don't assume that we'll look to having that number climb significantly as we did see sort of a peak in the capturing and relocation of the PFAL. It seems to be dwindling as far as our captures of PFAL. We could certainly extend the program but not fund it. And what I mean by that is we can make the vendor available to our residents, but as far as the fee is concerned, we can have the residents certainly pay for that. That is the council's priority, whether we want to take that cost and move it into the new fiscal year. I don't assume that $38,000 is going to be the right number. I assume it to be much, much less. I will say about 50% of that. The department was assigned three priority initiatives. The first one being the economic development program. The second is the bid or Business Improvement District. And the last one was the incentive program, or is the incentive program, for the planting of heritage trees. I'll go over the first one, which is economic development, which is very exciting for me, by the way, but no pressure on the council. It is a high in terms of staff demand where the program does place my position as being the Economic Development Director. And I just attended a conference called CALIT. It's an economic development conference where I ran into a lot of colleagues, and their primary responsibility is economic development in terms of marketing, retaining programs, retention programs, attracting, marketing, that kind of thing. This program essentially places my position as being that one personnel that is doing all that work. So that's the reason why it's a high demand on the staff. We're looking to approximately, with the city council's permission, looking at $91,000 for the program, which includes a set aside of a few planning documents with relation to what we call a specific plan, as well as the associated environmental reviewing documents that are mandatory. There are a couple of other outreach materials, dollar amounts, to attend programs, softwares, in order to market for the program. The other priority initiative is related to a bid, a Business Improvement District. Now, this gets very complicated. So again, I attended this workshop last week, and one of the...
Do you want to take questions on each initiative individually, or do you want to do it all at the end?
It's up to the council.
Council, what's your suggestion?
I think we better talk about this before we get to the end.
Okay. Keep going, come back.
Okay. So one of the workshops that I did attend at that conference was about what is a bid? And so a Business Improvement District started in 1994 through the passing of legislation, which allowed for governments to essentially create an assessment district for specific commercial areas. And the whole intent of the program is to use the assessment to then transfer some kind of funding to those commercial property owners for facade treatments, which could include replacing of windows, replacing of awnings, signage, things like that. The way that the program works is it's very much spearheaded by, for lack of a better word, an HOA of a commercial area. It is a petition of the business owners to make this program work. Without that petition, there is really no bid. If a majority of the business owners agree to having this assessment, which they will have to agree on what the assessment is going to look like or tax, they have to agree to what that figure looks like. They also have to agree to what kind of improvements are going to take place within year one, within year two, as long as they have this program in place. And the way that it works is if this group petitions the city council, we would then, council will approve a resolution of intent to form this district. Along with obtaining that information will come what that assessment's going to look like, what the dollar amount's going to look like. It can be in the form of a tax on the business or a tax on the actual property owner. It really depends on, again, the HOA of that community. It becomes complicated in the sense of an additional tax on the businesses. Even though you're taxing the property owner, they will then transfer that tax to the businesses, which they will then transfer the tax to the consumer. They already pay a tax, an annual tax called a business license, which a majority of them do have a hard time filling that obligation. On top of that, what they assess themselves, the question is, is that enough to satisfy the programs? Facade treatments, replacing of awnings, replacing of windows, that's a very expensive endeavor. And it will take years to accumulate enough funds to even do projects like that. And so the argument, along with that, is who gets a piece of the pie first? So there's a lot of scenarios that could certainly go wrong. In talking to my colleagues last week during the conference, they have shared with me the struggles of their bids. And it comes from the poor management of the HOA with the funds to situations in which the city had to take over the program. It's not intended to be a program that is heavily on the staff side. It's supposed to be initiated by this HOA group. And so there seems to be a lot of pitfalls to the program, more so than there is the benefit. It's not a program that you'll see overnight improvements. It'll take years for the funds to be accumulated enough so that there's enough money to make the improvements that we're looking for. So it's a very difficult program to maneuver, a lot of pitfalls. And I at least would like more time to dive into this concept. There are a variety of bids. There's a restaurant bid program, there's a tourism bid program. There's all kinds of things associated with the '94 law. So being that it's so infant in terms of us taking a look at this, I'd like to take a little bit more time to review this, if the council wouldn't mind that. The last one is the Tree Incentive Program. Initially, we felt that this was a program that was a rebate-type of system. But then, once we dove into the rebate system, we found that the cities who do rebate systems are utilizing their electricity utility companies to help with the cost. And so one example is that if you plant a tree, the idea is that eventually it's going to shade your home, which will then bring costs down for electricity or the usage of mechanical systems to heat and cool the property. Obviously, we don't have that situation in this city, so I took a different direction and spoke to a local nursery. Actually, the owner of the nursery lives in town. And I shared with him the idea of looking into a program that allows the city to purchase trees from the nursery. He would then set aside these specific trees. Of course, they need to be heritage trees. We would then create a system where applicants would apply for this program. We would have qualifiers, of course, to the program. Once approved, they take the application to the nursery and select the tree that they're looking for. Now, because, two issues with the program that I found solutions for. Number one is storage. We would then have to agree with the nursery to have them store these trees. And number two, we don't want a system where we burden the nursery with respect to their supply. And so we would have to look for a program or a system where we would purchase a specific amount of trees on a quarterly basis as to ensure that they can replenish the supply that we are taking away from them. I've set aside in the budget $25,000, which this owner agrees is a good number to use for annual basis, just to start the program out. He feels confident that it can work with this dollar figure. It is one of the initiatives that I feel where the dollar amount could be... It is one of the initiatives that I feel where the dollar amount could be lowered. So that's a high potential for discussion for today. So with that said, I open for questions.
Thank you. Gretchen, do you have any questions? Good place to start.
When she saw the red marks. Sorry about that. Yeah, I have some questions, and we have to go back to the beginning, so I'm sorry. So I don't know if we want to do this as a group, but go over the main part and then talk about the initiatives, or just I'll go to Dan. So stop me if you want. The first sections were, I guess it's called an overview. And I wanted to ask you about some of the things here because I see that these are ongoing problems, and we had them kind of as an initiative or focus for last year, like the proactive code enforcement that you mentioned under special accomplishments and things like that. And I was concerned because not all the positions have been filled, particularly for code enforcement. And I think that's still a major concern for residents. And so I hear it, I'm sure you hear it, 10 times more, or we all do. And so I wanted to make that a focus and see what we're doing to get that done because we're not talking about it in sort of the budget. I know that as not really a senior planner, that didn't affect it as much as the part-time code enforcement officer, and that we haven't filled that position, but that's been open for a while. So I wanted to get an idea from you as to what the problem is with that and how we can better resolve that.
That's actually my question to answer. That's an HR problem. Aldo has been very proactive about trying to get that position filled, and he's been extremely frustrated that it has not been filled yet. The recruitment simply hasn't been launched. And I can tell you why that's happened. It doesn't change the fact that it's not ideal. We've had a lot of recruitments to do, there've been many vacancies. We have an interim HR manager that has many demands on his time. I've actually made some changes in the last week that are going to get HR programs a little bit more up and running, especially recruitments. But that's the issue. It's not a fault on Aldo's side, it's a problem on the admin's side, and we're going to work on fixing that immediately. So that's what's happening with the code enforcement position issue.
It was buried in David's desk, is that what you're saying?
There were a lot of things that were buried there. When we put everything together and looked at all the recruitments that needed to be done, we were somewhere in the neighborhood of 15 or so recruitments, and I don't know what that means to you, but that's an extraordinarily high number of recruitments to do amidst everything else that needed to get done when we have an interim person handling HR. So it's just been a juggling act. There are actually several things that, in the grand scheme of priorities, there are a lot of them that are priorities, and some of them are moving forward and some of them aren't even though they're priorities because time has been an issue. And again, that's what I said, I've made a few changes in the last week or so, and I think we're going to be able to see some progress on those. But again, I want to be sure that Aldo doesn't get held responsible for those because that has not been his fault.
Okay. Well, so my concern then would be our resolution of that might be that we don't count it as an accomplishment that we continue to put this as objectives and something that we need to focus on for next year because it's dropping off on this, but we have yet to accomplish adequate code enforcement. And I think the residents feel strongly about that. And it's in part, obviously, a large part due to that. You need the personnel to go out there. So that was my concern about the general descriptions here because some of these-- I also had a question about building and zoning inspections and enforcements. Do we use, for example, the plan and design review? What point do we use outside services in all these areas? And what we contract out to separate contractors? And what part of it is done by the full-time employees on staff, understanding that we're short of these areas?
The only contract service that we have is with respect to the plan check services. That is a structural engineer who we contract with to review plans to ensure that they meet both building and fire code requirements. The building inspector, as well as the inspectors for zoning, that's all in-house. So that is Mark Farrell, he's our one and only building inspector. He does all the building inspections for their city. He's a permanent employee. And both planners, Eva and Christine, as well as myself, conduct these zoning inspections.
Okay, so those are my concerns of carrying that over to next year, however you might want to phrase it, but to keep that as something that we're still focusing on in this area. About the PFAL, I know you discussed that and proposed dropping it as it will sunset. I understand it's going to terminate now because, or shortly, let's say, because you can't do it once they're nesting or something. So there is a certain time of year. So we're running out of that time. However, I do understand that there's a couple of areas in the city since everybody's very pleased with the program so far now that it's up and running, but there was kind of a delay. And there is another area, and I've had people call me, that the person who's doing it now just doesn't have enough of those traps to go and tackle a third area of the city. And I'm sure you're aware of that, or we could talk. So I do think there is definitely going to be a need next year because I don't think that other street area, Homet and up in that kind of north, north area, has gotten any, and they've been requesting it, and they have a problem going on as well, that they're looking to. But he just doesn't have the ability to do it now because he has them set up where he does. So I'm just, even if we give it half of the amount, I would like to see that service extend to all the people in the city who've requested it this year because, you know, there was just a mechanical reason why it couldn't be done. And we're going to run into the time with the checks and everything, and nobody wants to do it then. So I don't know if you can come to us with a lower amount based upon what is used up, but I would like to see something so we can at least give those people in that area the same, whatever, benefit from our program as they tried to get this year, but we just don't have the ability. But everybody is very pleased with that.
Why don't we stop there? Susan, do you have any questions or comments on the core functions, the accomplishments, the objectives, or the explanation changes?
I have just a few. May I just continue? One quick thought on the PFAL. I've been following where those have been trapped. Has it been mostly in that Fairfield Place area?
We have one on Fairfield, one on Santa Anita, and we have another on Gainesboro.
Have we focused it all in central Lorraine, say near Delmar, that area where I often see a fair number of them on the street?
I have not focused the program on Lorraine, although I have approached property owner on Homet's, sorry, it was not, yeah, near Homet's. But I was not aware of the supply issues that our vendor is having. I mean, you figure he had more than three traps. I have approached at least 16 property owners with this program, and we only have three traps. Not to say that those were not interested in the program, it could be a supply issue, which is odd to me, but we can certainly, if the project were to move forward, or even between now and the nesting period, which we have seven weeks of before it hits that nesting period, we can focus our attention to those areas.
Thank you. And just a question about patterns. Can we still capture the males while the females are nesting?
I will have--
Or is that cruel?
No. My understanding is that the traps are quite large, and they put a lot of food in there. They capture several birds at one time.
Gotcha.
So I don't think it's not a single, you know, you can't just trap one and decide you get out and you don't. You know what I mean? You can't just do the males. They're actually quite large, and that's part of the issue that he's having is it's like a 10, 15--
Little house.
Yeah, thing. And so they're going in there, and it's working, but it's for a long time to get them used to it. When it's pretty full, then they spring the trap or close the trap.
It's a 10 by 10 by 6 cage. And it can trap up to 12 at one point, at one time, but it took at least two weeks for them to get acclimated to the locations. It didn't happen instantly.
Right.
Thank you. Last question--
Sorry, just before we move on, just to be clear, because this is actually the perfect discussion that we need to have. What I'm hearing is there's some discussion around, Aldo's made a recommendation to decrease this amount for next year, but I'm hearing that you guys would like to see some money in there. So just as each of you weigh in, if you could just be explicitly clear, you're nodding your head, so, okay, we're at two now. Okay, perfect, thank you.
And then going to your bid piece--
Let's talk to the bid piece. Do you have any--
Gotcha. No problem.
Mr. Hall, do you have any questions on this first?
No, and I'm in favor of continuing the PFAL.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I'm in favor of continuing PFAL, but can you show us a picture of the trap next time?
Sure.
The house. Little house.
And I have a question regarding inspector. We had one full-time and a part-time, so do we only have one full-time now?
We have a full-time inspector in-house that does building inspections. We have a contract inspector who does nothing but fire inspections. So that contract is related to the inspection of fire sprinklers and fire alarm systems. And he only works on Fridays.
There is no part-time building inspector position. There's a part, I know it gets confusing, there's a part-time code enforcement officer position, which is the one that's not filled at the moment.
We used to have a guy that did it on Friday.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking of.
That was, that's the current--
The fired--
The current individual is the same person.
What's his name?
Moses.
Okay. Thank you.
I too am in favor of continuing the PFAL initiative. Yes, go ahead.
There was a part-time code enforcement officer?
No, I was thinking Moses.
Sorry.
And how many full-time employees are approved for your current fiscal year?
Was nine FTEs, but apart from full-time, there are seven.
Approved in the budget, there's eight.
Yeah, sorry.
We're just about to make that switch. Eight full-time employees and two part-time employees is how it gets to nine. That's what Gretchen did.
So you're down one, essentially?
Yes, he's down a half plus a half.
Two halves?
Yeah.
Okay.
I thought it was down a half and a fourth. Isn't the senior planner--
That was a part-time position.
They both were part-time.
You approved both part-time positions last year. And then the proposal that Aldo's making, including the economic development person, would be to raise the staffing in his department to 9.5, a full-time code enforcement.
From nine.
Nine.
Yeah, and again, having headcounts on these sheets would be helpful.
So you do have that. That was one of those changes that we made after your first meeting. So under core functions, for every department, we went in and added it as the last line of core function.
Right, but it says nine full-time employees.
It says nine full-time equivalents.
Oh, E. Okay, I'm sorry, I thought it was--
Eight plus half plus half.
Right, no, the examiner's math gets there. It might be fair to think of it as seven plus two part-time people.
It's eight plus two part-time people.
And the proposal again next year--
Would be eight plus three part-time people.
9.5.
Right, or 9.5. I think the real answer is that we started to get to last week is actually what would be useful are org charts. We just didn't have that this time. And as we've met with you each time, you have made suggestion requests just kind of on the fly that we've had like a day to incorporate. So we've tried to do that. Org charts take much longer, so we haven't been able to do that. But it's actually org charts that'll solve some of this next year.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's take the conversation into the City Run Economic Development Program. Does anybody have any final questions?
I've got some questions. In your study of this, in your training, did anybody give any idea as to the type of economic return a city might get for investing in a program like this?
One of the things that I did get out of, at least last week's conference to begin this whole system, was that as soon as a program is created, it takes several years to start seeing the gain of that. Because, and the gain with respect to this city is sales tax.
It's what?
Sales tax. The increase of sales tax. And associated with that could be facade improvements, where if there's additional businesses in town, revenues go out for the businesses, they have enough money to then renovate their buildings. And so there's an appearance standard that gets increased as you start to see the gains of sales tax and revenues from these various businesses. But what I've captured in talking to my colleagues is that it's not going to be overnight system. It's going to take several years for this to start seeing some positives.
Is there any other people money for a program like this?
There are incentives for businesses to take advantage of with respect to, for example, the bid would be one incentive that could be approached. But there are incentives for first-time businesses that want to operate in town with respect to, one example, a restaurant, who's a first-time business owner can use some of these incentives or funds to purchase equipment, for example. Not so much from the city side of things where we can request funding for these types of programs.
But this is, the type of monies you're talking about is economic development program has a notebook to give people and say, hey, if you're interested, this is where you go out and get some money for this.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Susan, do you have any questions?
I do, thank you. It's not stated here, but I presume this is for Central Business District, which technically goes from Bedford to Delmar, but maybe a little bit shortened to say Bridgeway or somewhere around there. Is that what you're thinking of?
That is what I'm thinking initially, yes.
Okay. And have you spoken to any current business owners about the concept in general terms?
I did speak to a property owner with respect to this program, and they were very excited that we're looking into developing a program that markets, that was their primary objective, is to ensure that this program markets the commercial areas, because that's where they see that they can get the program moving along, sort of a grassroots effort in this case, where you advertise their locations, you advertise that they exist, then they can funnel the customers into these areas. The other focus to the program that I've heard, not only through attending some of these conferences, but in speaking to colleagues, was the ability of creating that anchor, to say. And I'm not talking about big box anchors, because anchors could be Starbucks, could be coffee shop. They were much interested in how that could be developed in various locations in our city. And there are potentials in our city to do that.
Just thinking out loud, I feel 100% confident that you would be an excellent marketer. However, I have some concerns at this point if there would be an obvious party or two who would say, yeah, I've got this, I'm going to pull the team together. What would you say is an average business license in this city?
Professional office is about $54.
Oh, so it's really not.
Unless you don't pay on time.
Somebody know.
I know that. Another hundred.
Another hundred.
We like that money coming in. Okay.
That's why I eat a lot of these.
So on this concept, would you then feel comfortable, since it's sort of new to some of us, in perhaps looking at an intense education period for business owners, and perhaps the more likely buy-in to come from those who are feeling some business success at this point as opposed to those who are really struggling?
Well, the key word that you said is buy-in. And so a lot of, the responsibility that I have is to ensure that there is that buy-in from the council, as well as the commercial property owners, as well as the residents who live near these commercial districts. And so the obligation that I have is to somehow create a visual understanding of what we're dealing with. And what I mean by that is, is the educational campaign, which demonstrates, okay, you know, this is really what we're looking to do, it's not sort of an extreme program where we're looking to bring in high developments, mixed-use development, is more of a mom-and-pop type of program. And so there is going to be a heavy amount of education, and I intend to do that sort of visually. And what I mean by that is, what I brought with me is a layout of the Central Business District, where I started to identify where there are the paths, pedestrian paths, where you see the anchors, you see what we call the nodes in the districts. That way, we can identify sort of where our high potentials are and sort of stay away from any barriers that we may see.
Now to beg the question, it feels more internal than external in terms of developing this concept. Can you just redirect me on that?
Yeah, a lot of it's going to come from what I can gather from attending the conferences and the workshops, the workshops that I'm able to go to. This last one last week, I learned a lot about economic development and sort of the pitfalls of that, and really the realities of such a program. And so a lot of it is-- the realities of such a program. And so a lot of it is going to come from how I can make this program take off from the ground up.
Can I offer some additional information? So San Marino has never had an economic development program proper. An economic development program is about proactively figuring out what your vision is for your business community. And as you know, that's one of the critical success factors that you adopted last year, was to have a complementary business district. It means figuring out what that looks like, and then it means proactively going out, building relationships with your existing business owners, and essentially courting potential new business owners. And San Marino has the added challenge that because we would not be going after big-box kinds of stores, it's also not just about going out and finding business owners, but finding people who might want to become business owners and encouraging them to start a business when they haven't already. If you're looking for a big-box store, it's easy. You just email the marketing company of Walmart, or Amazon, or Nordstrom, or whatever you want to put in there. But if what you're looking for is a one-off boutique shop to be here, what doesn't exist yet. That's the whole point. So economic development is really about a proactive program of building relationships, of having a vision, and going out and making that happen. Most cities that do serious economic development have a separate either department or division for it. The cities that I have worked in have done economic development before, and it's a significant expenditure of time. I don't want to beat the dead horse, but we've said the words "building relationship" multiple times, and that's not a fast thing. That's a constant set of interactions that need to be going on. And part of what Councilmember Jacobowski is talking about is building that relationship in our existing community of support, of people who want to come forth and do that. That is not a small task. And the part of that relationship building that has to be done at the high level, it's going to have to be done by Aldo. There's just nobody else to do it. But there's a portion of the work that can be done by a more junior person, someone who can develop the marketing materials, prepare the flyers, get the packets ready, send out emails of interest and that sort of thing. And that's where the request is in there for a part-time analyst. That's a very appropriate position. I've seen it in a number of cities before. That particular niche is something where there is often luck finding people that are fresh out of grad school, or maybe who are just finishing up grad school. So as I have told you before, I will typically never bring you a part-time position recommendation unless I really think there's good odds that we could get somebody in that position, because I generally think it's very difficult to fill a part-time position. This is one of those that you can often have good luck on because of the kind of position that it is. So there's nowhere else for this to be housed other than Aldo. And if we want to do this, you do just need to be aware of the expenditure of time. There are people that he met at his conference last week, and I know this without even knowing who he met, because I know them, that are full-time economic development directors, economic development managers, that have multiple staff people under them. So this is a significant expenditure of energy. And it's really exciting. And Aldo's not kidding. Every time he starts talking about his own starts sparkling. So again, you know, no pressure. But it is really exciting actually for our city. You know, we have several vacant storefronts. Aldo is correct that the tangible benefit from this is the sales tax revenue. But I don't think any of us like driving down Huntington and seeing a bunch of vacant storefronts. It's not good for our property owners on the residential side. It means that there's services that our residents could be getting that they're not getting because it's vacant. So there is a lot of bane for the buck that comes from this, although we may not see it tangibly overnight. This is an exciting moment for us, actually. It really is. Thank you.
Director, do you have any questions? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, so what's a percentage of our revenues that comes from sales tax?
I'm going to direct that question. Well, out of the general fund total of $23.9 million, we get $500,000. That's about 2%.
Thank you.
You mentioned you were focused on a central business district. Why not the Mission District as well?
Well, in terms of the specific dollar amounts for the tools that I have in place with respect to this specific plan and the EIR, those dollar figures are for a narrow perspective, which is the Central Business District. But the program as a whole is very general. And so with respect to marketing retention programs, it's going to be throughout the city.
Okay, good. Because I think for this to be successful, you're going to have to find some advocates. Or the advocates might be over there rather than down Huntington. Thank you. Discussion. Susan, what do you think?
Concerning this particular item, I think there's a lot that has to be fleshed out. I'm excited that Aldo is really, I'm sorry, Director Sivantis is getting enthused about moving this forward. I share in that enthusiasm. I think we've got a lot of work cut out for us in pulling in the existing business owners. We see them in varying degrees of success. And I can't help but believe if Huntington Drive were better populated with appropriate businesses, we could see something that could take off in a better way.
Mr. Tal, what do you have to comment?
No, I mean, the only, and I would imagine that the, I'm in favor, but the, you know, I would imagine the program would include looking at businesses that weren't banks and real estate agents and places where we don't necessarily get the sales tax.
Gretchen, comments, thoughts?
Yeah, I think it's kind of, I worry about making a significant investment in this regard. I like the idea of bringing in businesses. And I do appreciate the enthusiasm and doing something about empty storefronts. But some of those things seem to be out of our hands because a lot of the issues with people coming here, and I think we discussed this between the two of us, that if we bring a person who might want to have a business here, it backs up to residential. And so it limits hours, it limits the type of thing that can go in a lot of those spaces. Plus, we have property owners who have fairly high expectations of what they can get. And so those are things that are always going to be out of our hands. And I think that influences the vacancies to a large extent, more than it is, you know, because I think you do have relationships. And whenever I brought somebody to you who you were interested in, you had already heard about it, they were looking for a space or checking out this. But it's getting those things that are beyond the city's control. So that's my concern with getting a part-time person in here, another staff member, is I don't know that that person is really going to help. I applaud spending money on this and trying to think of ways, but it's really, we have bigger issues. And then if you throw in the traffic and the 7-10 monies and what's going to happen to Huntington, I can't imagine that this is going to be a place where a boutique would ever go, at least on Huntington Drive. So I have concerns just with how this is going. Those are ones, I know, we've talked about trying to get people here, and we are, our hands are tied in a lot of respects. And I don't know how to change that, just given the dynamics of the city and the way it's set up. But I look forward to hearing some ideas about that. And I appreciate all the effort that you do, because I know that you do meet with business people and try to get them here. But it just seems to not ever really happen.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, sure. You have another question about that part-time analyst. Is that a long-term or depends?
It depends. It could be long-term. It could be someone that I could, that I would use for an extended period of time. That, we won't know until year one, where we sort of dive into the program and see what the needs are.
And yeah, I'm in favor of this. I just worry about the traffic. And I also believe that survival of the fittest, you know, whatever happens, happens. Thank you.
I support this as well. I think it's a really steep uphill battle. But I think we've got to make a run at it for a year or two and see if we can be successful.
This is not the place to really get into it. But I think there's two or three planning schemes that we could go with to be successful at this. Aldo and I have had some discussions. And it could tie into the 7-10 money. If we are indeed trying to move traffic more quickly, then we could also change the type of mix of businesses that we're looking for. But I think we just, we owe it to explore this. If we're going to keep having empty storefronts, and as we know, some of them are R1-used to C1, well, then rather than have them empty, move them back to R1. We just can't have them sitting forever.
Do you need anything else from us, City Manager?
I am hearing general consensus to move this forward.
Yes, you are.
Okay, then I don't need anything further. Thank you.
Questions about the tree incentive? Gretchen?
Stripped me to end with you.
Want to end? Okay, that's okay, too. My only concern, I love it. I mean, I think it's great. I didn't understand, in here, so you're, the concept that you're bringing forward for this program, at least for the first year, is to have quarterly purchases of 15-gallon heritage trees.
Correct.
Essentially.
Yes.
And then see if homeowners apply and use them all up, that we would order the next quarter.
Right.
If they're not used and people aren't interested, then obviously we wouldn't need to have more than the first 120 to get through a year or something. So this is kind of, because 650 trees is your target for the first year.
Right.
And that is a reduced price at the $38 from what would normally?
Well, according to this specific nursery, a 15-gallon heritage tree is going to run at about $38. That does not include the transfer, the planting of the tree.
But, I know, but is that the city, like a commercial rate, or is that like I could go to Armstrong and buy a $38 tree?
That is the market value of the tree. So you can go to the tree service and buy the tree for that amount of money. It's not, it's not a dollar amount that's tied to a group purchase or a bundle purchase. It's just, you can show up to that nursery and buy the tree for that much.
Hey, but I could, I guess I might, maybe I didn't ask the question right. Because it's a discounted cost, or that's just how much a 15-gallon tree costs?
That's just how much a 15-gallon tree costs.
So there's no deal on the tree?
There's no deal.
What we're basically saying is, we will purchase the trees and front the money.
Right.
So could they give us a deal?
I didn't ask that question yet. I was trying to get his buy-in. Certainly, it's worth a shot to ask that question, being that we're buying bulk.
Why would we want to buy in inventory trees? That's not the approach I think makes sense. Because you gotta, you know, your inventory is going to die on you, it's going to go bad. You might have the wrong inventory. I thought this was just going to be an incentive rebate program to help somebody get a heritage tree.
And that's another opportunity as far as an option for the program. The initial program was visioned as a $50 rebate if you bought this type of tree. Unless you set parameters to what kind of tree that is, that $50 is not going to do anything as an incentive. If you're going to go out and buy a $38 heritage 15-gallon tree, that might be worthwhile. But if the intention is to purchase a 36-inch box tree, $50 is not going to really do much to that.
Good. Yeah, because I'm okay with the budget allocation of $25,000. I'd encourage more heritage trees, but I'll vote it down if it's involved with inventory.
Right. I think that was, well, we talked about it. My, the concept would be working with somebody like my councilmember suggested, or a nursery that would be the supplier. So they're interested in giving us, or we prefer somebody who had a list of our heritage trees and something like that, and some kind of hopefully better price. But yeah, I wouldn't want to commit, because I don't know how many people would want to put a 15-gallon tree in their front yard necessarily, because that's pretty small.
Yeah, because you want box, huge boxes.
I think if somebody really wants to make an impressive addition to their front yard, which we would like people to do, they would buy a box. And so I would rather see 200 box trees of some significance in the city, but not, but we shouldn't have to pick them out and say, here are the 200. Now choose, you choose yours and you choose your, you know what I mean? We need to back away from actually the inventory, I would agree, and make it like, we want 250 new trees in the front yard of San Marino homes. The first 250 people who go through this process then get this amount.
Okay.
I would rather see it in those terms.
Put it in perspective, on your operating charts, 11 of 11, you show that you planted 11 trees last year and five trees this year. So in this initiative, if you're looking at 650 trees or whatever it is.
It's per month.
Okay, per month, okay. Still five per month is 60 versus 650. I think a number of, I'll say 150 to 200 bigger trees would make a bigger statement than 650 twigs.
And truly, I don't think that people would necessarily use it if it's small, or if it was for $50. So that's why I would agree. That was my concern with this. I want to encourage people to put in a front yard tree that they're interested in putting in and helping people do that. And I do think it would be larger than that. We didn't talk about this.
We haven't yet.
I know that there's still three councilmembers left to go, but it would be helpful if this helps, basically what we've heard before. If your position is that you're comfortable with the budget allocation that we're talking about, about $25,000, but you'd like to see a different program, if you let us know that, that's helpful. Because then for budgeting purposes, we can keep the $25,000 in, but we can still keep coming back to until we get to the program that you feel most comfortable with.
I would be comfortable with that and like to hear a shift toward bigger trees, maybe fewer. And also the front yard, people can get one and it's a front yard. You know, like make parameters, we kind of discussed before, it has to meet these criteria in heritage, but then have a fewer number and see if that takes off in the city.
Mr. Mayor, any other thoughts?
No, I concur with Vice Mayor.
Mr. Tal?
I concur with the Vice Mayor and the Mayor on this.
Ms. Jacobowski?
I certainly concur with the $25,000. And maybe Director Throne would know more about the box cost. It sounds like we would see a fairly significant increase in the cost, wouldn't we?
I think the 24-inch boxes that we purchase are $150.
Thank you.
Which is not what you would go to the home store and buy a 24-inch box tree for $150.
You're getting them at a commercial rate.
We get the commercial rate, yes.
Right. Thank you.
Do you need anything else on this initiative?
Nope.
That's $167.
Ready to talk about the bid?
Mr. Tal, you have any questions regarding the Business Improvement District?
Well, the only question I had, it sounds like you want to do more study before putting in, well, first of all, there's no line item, for lack of a better term, on that in this budget.
Right.
You want more, so I only have a general question. Would the bid, you might have a bid for Huntington Drive, might have a bid for Mission, you could actually devise it that way?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Susan, you have any questions?
No, I'm done. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? I was just wondering why this is even here an initiative, because when, in your verbalization, it was kind of, I wasn't seeing a real value in this. And to the extent this takes any time at all, I think there's probably time better spent, your time better spent on other areas.
Well, it's really when you take a deep dive into the program and start to understand the intent of the law. It's a 1994 law that's built into the state in highway codes, so, which I get to read. They're quite lengthy. So there's a lot of pieces involved with really a true understanding of what it takes to form a bid. There are procedures for protesting a bid, which could then warrant the bid unsuccessful. There are a lot of pieces that I need to educate myself on here.
It's a great question and what its priorities should be. And I think this would be very low on the list.
This would be as well. This is, this is part of what I was trying to say before about San Marino not really having a fully-fledged economic development program. So I think Aldo and I kind of went through the same process that you all have now gone on, on this bid issue, which is that in the beginning, it seemed like a great idea. So we put it out there to brainstorm on. And as we've learned more and more about it, it will, it is not likely to be extremely successful here. It's basically asking our own businesses to tax themselves and then use money. And that probably is not great in the relationship-building initiative that we'd like Aldo to embark on. So we've learned a lot as we've gone through this, too. And this is also part of why, as we ask you to invest in the economic development program, Aldo tells you that, you know, we need a year or two to really see results of this, because he's going to be on a steep learning curve now.
Before we ask you to walk us through your operating metrics and what you see or want us to understand, I do have a question, thank you for the inventory of vehicles.
Before we get to that, can I just get the sense that basically you all are okay if we take this off the parity initiative list? Yes, okay, great, thank you.
Yes, I don't think it makes sense.
We have, we have two vehicles in the planning department, the 2014, they have a total of 17,000 miles on them. Why don't we just get rid of those vehicles and reimburse people for mileage?
The Ford Escape is, I want to say about four years old.
Four to five years old with 17,000 miles.
Yeah, the other car, the smart vehicle, I actually got from the police department as a way of saving the department some money. I do, we do have built into five-year plan the purchase of a vehicle for code enforcement. The other option, the other option could be the miles.
Yeah, my bias here is, let's not buy vehicles. Let's reimburse people, because vehicles is license fees and maintenance and headcount and everything else.
So this is, this is actually a bigger picture question. Having employees use their own vehicles has other issues associated with it. We have extra liability, and we do that as well. Some employees prefer not to use their vehicle, and it's that kind of extended use. If it's just, hey, use your car to drive to this conference, you know, three times a year, that's different than you're going to be out in your vehicle all day, driving up and down, and some people just don't even feel comfortable with mileage reimbursement amount. So this is a bigger picture question that kind of has to be evaluated as a whole about what we want to approach to be. I understand that you like us to get rid of inventory. It isn't necessarily that simple, but that's part of why we started with the inventory, so that we can start asking some of those questions.
What is that, is it not used within the city or outside of the city?
No, just within the city.
Or bicycle?
Do you want to have bike lanes for that?
Why don't you walk us through your operating metrics to see what we should be looking at in a sense of that?
Really, in a nutshell, the operating metrics really just kind of shows the day-to-day workload that we have, that is really highly dependent on providing service. It's a, you know, a lot of our costs are associated with the user cost. And so you come in and pull a permit, that's generating revenue to offset the cost of the services provided. So the graphs are essentially sharing a picture in terms of how many permits we've issued throughout the years, building inspections, for example, how many trees we planted, that kind of thing. But it's really just a summarization of really what occurs on a daily basis within the department. That's, that's really, as I mentioned, just a summary of the workload.
Any council members see anything they want to spotlight or highlight on the metrics?
Yeah, I had, I had problems because I thought the titles were so general, I had no idea what we were talking about, just starting in the beginning, number of inspections. Is that residential, commercial, building, code enforcement, fire, safety? Are they done by city employees or are they done by outside contractors? Which is what I wanted to tell you before.
These are all, these are all building inspections, and these are all done by our in-house building inspector.
Okay, so building inspections meaning new constructions?
It could be new construction, remodeling, yeah.
So, but all residential?
It could be commercial as well. These are all inspections that are performed by our building inspector, and it's a variety of inspections.
Oh, then that, that number must be wrong on the left. Because you're not doing 300 inspections a month.
Right. Then that means that the C, it starts at 100, 200, 300, 400, 500.
That might be the total for the, well, I don't, I don't know.
Year-to-date on the right.
Yeah.
I found it.
That makes sense.
We did have a problem last week, as you know, with the police numbers, with the matrix on the left not lining up right. So these are some of the things that we're going back and looking at.
So maybe we could clarify that. So, and I'm assume, assuming that below that, putting aside the number issue, and better label, the permits issued versus filed. Again, is that, is this permits, building permits?
Yeah, these are all building permits.
Okay, so this whole is, all of this is building, it's in the next page as well, and the plans received and adopted are all building?
They're all building safety related, yes.
Okay, and then I was wondering how, okay, and going to the fourth one, I guess bottom of page nine of 11, the second page of these metrics, it says plans received versus approved. And I was trying to figure out, when you say, because sometimes we have more plans that we've received than we're approving, and other times it's the inverse of that, and that is that, I didn't understand this one, or how it could be used, these two lines?
Yeah.
Because it's, I understand we want to see how long it takes from the process point, you know, our residents getting a response in a certain amount of time, but this one, I wasn't understanding the point of this graph.
Okay. It's, I mean, certainly much easier to see in a table numbers format than a line chart, but essentially what it is, is when an application is submitted, at least this is a picture it can paint, is that when an application is submitted, how long does it take for the city to approve that project?
Isn't that the one above it though?
That is, well, the one above it is just related to a building permit. So when someone submits an application for a building permit, how long does it take to get that permit? The one below us is when an applicant submits a set of drawings for a check or review, how long does it take for that check or review to take place? So the first one is, is a building permit that's been issued, the one below it is not so much a building permit, but just an approval of a set of drawings.
Can I ask a question on this too? So how can you have more approved than received? Is it from the previous year?
It's just going to accumulate.
So does that mean that you're getting less applications now?
Yeah, well, that's okay.
No, it's going to be cyclical, it's going to be, there's going to be months where we have.
Low barrier.
I couldn't tell you that.
Yeah, you might want to double check these, because the average, it is roughly a month to.
How can you have less?
And for a role, and for a view here of 18 months, in almost every case, there have been fewer received than approved.
Right.
Yeah, if you look at the bottom, it says, very like 50 received and then 58 approved. Yeah.
We'll go back in a little bit.
Okay.
Well, and one of the problems with using this for plans received and plans approved is, you might be dependent upon the architect or the homeowner or whomever to get back to you and to, or to put what you're requesting in there. So it's, it's, I don't think it's, it's not fair really to judge by, by plans received versus approved and the timing of this, because the time may not be their fault, and there's got to be a better way of measuring it.
I mean, I think this can only happen if you're getting less application.
Right. I'll take a look at that.
And of course, my head question's about the trees removed versus planted. So is this private trees or public trees or all trees?
Just private trees.
And so.
Up until you potentially and hopefully approve the urban forester recommendation, in the next one, public trees are primarily handled by public works and private trees. So that's why I see this one number.
I didn't know what the metrics are, or if we're combining them, like we combined the fleet or whatever. Okay, those are, those are my concerns about.
Thank you.
The metrics, thank you.
Move on to public works.
All right, well, thank you, Mayor Wong, and council members. Before I go into my operating budget presentation, I would like to highlight that the department is also responsible for compiling, managing, and executing your capital plan. The capital plan includes improvements, equipment and vehicles, and implementation and funding schedule. The capital plan has a similar level of complexity as the operating budget, and it also has added features of multiple revenue sources, each one with its own unique requirements. So at the end of this month, we'll be spending an entire morning, maybe longer, about the capital plan, so please stay tuned to that. The mission of the Parks and Public Works Department is to create and sustain our precious community assets. We do this by using best management practices and policies and employing skilled personnel. We maintain a comprehensive list of infrastructure facilities and assign personnel to six focus areas, right-of-way, fleet, water and wastewater, parks and grounds, building maintenance, and city engineering. I would like to highlight two special accomplishments that we have factored into the proposals in front of you today. First, we began a dedicated effort of sidewalk replacement, which is a council priority initiative for this year. In addition to your maintenance staff installing a half-mile sidewalk, you approved a multi-year sidewalk replacement contract, which makes this priority ongoing for the next four years. The second accomplishment is that we've taken a hard and serious look at revamping public works operations. Last year's Parks and Public Works budget actually contained many reductions in operational expenses based on my first-year assessment of the department. Because we included building maintenance activities that were previously included in other budgets into our budget, those reductions might have been overlooked. Nevertheless, beginning with last year's budget reductions, we used our operations plan to review again each item of work we perform, considered if we should be doing it, how we'd like to be doing it, and what might be the cost savings or additional costs if we made a change. Consequently, I'm proposing certain changes to the department to improve our performance by focusing on our strengths and reducing costs where we no longer need to make them. So moving on to the budget summary page, we have four asks, using Councilmember Udi's terminology, which are based on our operational priority initiative and the revamping of the department. These are the first two bullets under personnel, and bullets two and three under services and supplies. Starting with personnel, we are including the priority initiative of establishing the urban forester position, ideally by upgrading a current and qualified employee for an estimated increase of $7,871. Second, we propose to eliminate 3.5 maintenance positions. One maintenance worker one, one maintenance worker three, and three half-time maintenance assistants. The two maintenance worker positions and two of the three maintenance assistant positions have been vacant about four months. We tracked our work schedules and productivity since that time, and have drawn the conclusion that we can continue to provide good service without these positions being filled in the future. This is because I refocus work activities from improvements to maintenance. This reduction in staff does require more supervision and tighter management, and therefore I'm proposing to reclassify the three foreman positions to supervisor. The overall annual ongoing cost savings of these personnel changes is $208,145. Regarding vehicle maintenance, we reached out to the school district and neighboring communities for partnership opportunities. We learned from the school district that it has 16 vehicles and has one of their maintenance workers, who also does building maintenance, perform regular service and minor repairs. Their other needs are outsourced to a local service station. The other cities we've reached out to have their own dedicated fleet personnel who perform the same work as our workers, that is repair and service trucks, construction equipment, fire apparatus, and patrol cars. I have discussed outsourcing with both the police and fire chief, and they are concerned that when it comes to a priority repair, our safety vehicles would be second in line if we were using another agency, which is not acceptable because we have a limited number of reserved vehicles. The conclusion we've reached is that it will be difficult and expensive to contract out as compared to maintaining our own vehicles with our own personnel. Therefore, for now, I plan to provide fleet maintenance in-house. I am expecting some future savings in terms of the vehicle fleet that we will no longer need, and as a preview of things to come, you have in front of you a list of vehicles and heavy equipment for your information. I have highlighted those vehicles that I've initially determined are no longer necessary or too old to be in our fleet. I will also be making changes to improve our tracking and inventory systems and explore the possibility of offering our fleet services to the school district. To complete the personnel section, after you factor in the next four bullets of non-discretionary personnel costs, the overall ongoing decrease of the public works personnel budget is $123,342. Moving on to services and supplies, under the second bullet, we propose a new expenditure of $25,000 for condition assessments and inventory activities to support the urban forester priority initiative. The third bullet on that list reflects a $71,000 decrease in our materials and supplies budgets through the department. Most of the proposed savings are related to the annual purchase of concrete. Sidewalk replacement and tree planting is going to continue by using existing contractors, and we do not anticipate cost increases this coming year. Bullets four and five are non-discretionary costs due to expected changes in utility rates and regulatory fees. Finally, as described in the first services and supplies bullet, because some activities not commence until September 1st, the straight-line forecast of expenditures from February 28th is not overly precise. I am expecting, though, that the department will complete all of its operational day-to-day activities that we have in the budget and should be fully expensed by the end of the year. Moving on to the operating matrix sheets, I would like to take a moment to review them. I would like to highlight that we're currently underperforming in keeping up with vehicle servicing due to the volume of age-related repairs to our patrol cars. Next, on page six, I'd like to point out that the cost for parks and grounds upkeep is measured in dollars per acre, which is the measurement standard for public parks. I performed an informal benchmarking analysis, and our cost per acre falls about mid-range on the data that I was able to locate on other communities. A work order system such as the one I will be proposing to you as a capital equipment priority initiative at the end of this month, will be able to provide us with extensive data and allow us to further improve our processes. The work order system we're most interested in comes with an analytics dashboard and a mobile app for residents to report items to us. As it relates to the performance of the capital improvement program, that measurement can be looked at in several ways, and I will be sharing those ways with you at your capital plan workshop. The other metrics we're tracking seem to meet our goals and expectations. So therefore, on behalf of the department, thank you for your time. This concludes my overview of the Parks and Public Works operating budget, and I'm more than happy and willing to answer any questions you might have.
Susan, since you are on the ad hoc committee, what, do you have any questions? Do you have probably more in-depth knowledge in this area?
Well, as I stare at another ad hoc member, we did have some concerns about the staffing levels, and I'm extremely pleased to see that that staffing number is going down, and I concur, I think there's more room to go, and I think you will be able to justify anything that you present to us in the future, and I hope that this particular department will continue to be the focus of employee use of time. So, Mr. Udi, that does tie in with a major concern that we had with ad hoc, and we gave a lot of attention to PPW, and we also had the concerns about the vehicle issue. Thank you.
Mr. Tom, any questions?
Do you perceive that the procurement of the electric work order system will result in the saving of, for the personal cost?
Could you try that question again? So if we buy work order system?
Well, your electronic work order system is obviously meant to be, so that you can be more efficient.
Yes.
Do you perceive that the efficiencies will be so great that maybe in 2020, 2021, 2019, 2000, you'll be requesting even possibly a further reduction in staff?
That is a possibility. The alternative possibility is, we'll be able to demonstrate we have much more workload than we can actually handle. So, without committing one way or the other, the purchase of a system, it's not even, it's not purely efficiency, and this is actually a capital equipment expense, so we're going to digress a little bit. The system we're looking at will allow us to be able to track activity and time and the materials that are involved in it. So we will be able to dispatch employees without them having to come into the yard to do things. We'll be able to just continuously send them lists of things to do, and if they run out of their, what they're trying to, what they're accomplishing today, they will have a queue of things for them to keep going. So it pushes the work forward.
So it pushes the work forward electronically, as it were.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, no question.
Thank you. Rachel?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. One has to do with your core functions and day-to-day and the differences of metrics. You have here that there are 60 acres of landscaping, including Lacy Park and Medians, but the past year we had 35. So I was wondering, first of all, had the number jumped by 25 more acres? Was it something that wasn't being counted, like the Parkway or the Median or something?
Yes, that's, yes, you're exactly correct. Up until last year, we had only looked at Lacy Park as being the only park. As part of our, looking at our system last year, we really realized that the Medians, because they're zoned as parks, we should be thinking of them as parks, and therefore it accumulates together as 60 acres. So that's the land that we maintain. That's then how we look at our expense efficiency overall.
Okay. And then I was wondering, so then, when we get to this cost of parks and grounds upkeep, which you mentioned, which I thought was an interesting way to sort of, we should think about the cost of actually maintaining what we have, and I noticed, but we're going back, I just want to make sure we're comparing apples and apples. If you're talking about this is based on acres of park land or...
Yes.
That, or grounds, I don't know what grounds mean, but anyway, that's the building, the stuff outside here and City Hall and things like that, I assume. So if we're looking back into July 18, if you applied the same 60 acres all the way past, into the past to make, come up with this chart?
Yes, that's what we did in coming up with these bars. We looked at our total monthly expense, which is personnel and supplies, divide that by 60, that gives us our unit cost for that month for park work. So some months, we, in theory, we have the same amount of personnel cost, it's the material costs go up and down because...
Depending on what you're doing.
We're doing a lot of tree trimming right now, and so that drives that. So it does appear, well, we really have a year-and-a-half square of data here, but it does appear, it does follow growing cycles, but as we do this for the rest of this year into next, we'll have a better understanding of what's going on.
So it's both personnel time as well as material, materials supplies, but does it include capital improvements money, for example, trees, as well as like your maintenance money, which is the, you know, lawnmower time and edging and things like that? Does this reflect, when you say materials, are you actually saying what you plant in this, or is it more fertilizer and, I'm just trying to figure out the costs that go in there, other than personnel, or is this...
This is, this is your personnel expense and all of the materials and supplies, which may be that one month we're adding plantings here or there, you know, in Lacy Park or whatever. This does not include any of the capital expenditures that we make in our parks. This is purely the operating portion of it. So in your budget, when you look at the pages for parks and grounds, which currently are shown as two discrete cost centers, you add them together, divide it by 60, that's what those...
Okay, so it's personnel and sort of more maintenance, but in the past, like, for example, the point I'm getting, or what's troubling me is, is you have here in our Service and Supplies a $71,000 decrease, but that's only because you're moving trees, like, your department is no longer going to buy the trees and plant them, we're now going to have Mariposa or whomever, I don't know who we have. But the point is, so it's not really a decrease, you're just shifting it to now going to be an expense. Now, you don't see that there's going to be an additional cost?
We do not plan on changing any of the costs for our concrete contractor or our tree contractor. That's part of the, what we did was we looked at, should we really be planning on planting hundreds of trees? And the answer is, it's better if we, in our existing contract, because we do have a line item for planting trees and removing trees, just to continue to do that. The same goes with sidewalk. We were replacing our own sidewalk, and while we were doing, I think, a very good job of putting in a half-mile, that was really occupying an entire crew's worth of effort on a weekly basis. Plus, there was a material expense of $60-plus-thousand a year of concrete. So because we got such a great deal on our multi-year sidewalk contractor, we don't need to be placing concrete anymore. We just go out and do the spot repairs that we need to or to alleviate the hazard, and then we put that on the list because we have a contractor coming in to do a mile a year.
Vice Mayor, I think your question is, if we're seeing a $71,000 decrease here, are we just going to see a $71,000 increase somewhere else?
Right. Now, I understand, I'm trying to separate the sidewalks, I understand, we have a new contract, and we're putting it all as a capital improvement expense, but you're still going to have somebody going, or several people going out to repair. So if the sidewalk has a big issue, it's a safety hazard, you're still going to have to go out there, go out to somebody's home. You're not going to add that to the list and be done in 2022, right?
The intent is for the crew not to be in the wholesale placing, replacing sidewalk. So through our small sections, we'll do what we need to do to make the hazard as safe as possible, and make sure, depending on where it is in the priority ranking that we have in our sidewalk program, to see where that would fit on next year's list. But we're not, we did not shift any, we did not remove $71,000 from this budget and increase it over in the capital budget at all. So this is a reduction permanently in our operating budget.
This is another efficiency that Michael found, is essentially what he's telling you, is that as going through and taking a hard look at some of the contracts, some of which were already existing and some of which he's just negotiated, there is a way to do all of this work within those existing contracts and not double expend by putting it in the operating budget as well. So the amount that he is proposing to decrease is the amount that we believe can be appropriately absorbed in what we already have.
Okay. And we got the, I would like to look at this, since we just were handed the fleet vehicles or they were here on the table. I haven't had time to look at it at all, so I can't make comments about that. So I guess that was my main, oh, I have one last thing. The very last percentage that you give is a percent of adopted capital improvement projects completed. And so from what I'm seeing here, we've completed, this is like a two-day, 11% of last year's capital improvement project.
Six months.
In my, in six months. Whatever it is, am I understanding what this is? I don't understand how, I don't understand this. Let's just say.
One of the things we find is very challenging with capital projects is that you can measure their completion in a variety of different ways. The way that we have this set up right now is sort of mixes time and expenditure together, which really is sort of, does not create an accurate picture of completion, because you can have a project completed and it not be fully expensed. So one of the things that I'd like to spend a little bit of time on at your capital plan workshop is to go over the different ways you can measure if, how a project is, how a project is measured as complete. There are some nuances to it, and I think when we get into the discussion and you look at your capital program, you'll start to see, oh, okay, I understand that, and maybe you can help me out with guidance system, what you would like to see in reporting back. This one is, I'm not very comfortable with this because it doesn't reflect the nuances that you can be, you can have a project that's completely done and it totally blew your budget, or you have a project that's not complete and it becomes very complex and I really, it's...
If I could step in?
Is part of the problem also that you might start a project in year one and it's not done until year two?
That is, that's part of it, yes. So there's time, there's budget, and there's just general, in the construction industry, there's a certain amount, you can deem something to be, this project is 40% complete by time, 20% complete by expenditure, and which one is the actual one, well, it depends.
So we should rethink this measure. I would like to rechange this.
Yes. Part of why we've been struggling this one, this actually is part of the conversation we've been having with the Budget Subcommittee. So originally, the kind of normal industry standard in reporting capital project completion is by amounts of funds expended. But in our conversations with the Subcommittee, especially with Councilmember Udi, expressed some concerns that if we're just looking at money, well, we could go in there, these are close to your words, is we could just go in there and spend all the money, it doesn't mean that the project is actually done. So, I mean, of course, we don't do that, we don't have the authorization to do that, but it begs the question of, just because you see that amount of money is expended, it might be the industry standard, but that doesn't mean it makes sense from a common-sense perspective. So we've been trying to find different ways to express it, there is no perfect way, and so what you see here is the most recent not-helpful effort in trying to do that. So when we talk about capital projects at the end of the month, and Michael will spend a lot more interesting time going through all this with you, and we are hoping that this is kind of a back and forth so that you can help us get to something that is useful for you in understanding how far along we are in projects. So this is a work in progress. 40% completion.
Thank you for taking a look at headcount and finding, you know, three-and-a-half reduction. Help me understand if we have fewer people who supervise, why we need to promote two foremen to supervisors?
Well, we have three foremen, and they are currently working at, well, they're currently working in excess of what their job description is. They are truly supervisors, they write evaluations, they do personnel actions, and so for us to recognize that they are, in fact, not just glorified high-level laborers, but they are, in fact, doing supervisory work, they're...
So it's a reclassification?
It's a reclassification.
We're not doing promotion?
It's not a promotion, it's a reclassification.
What's the increase per person going to look like, kind of?
The increase is $60 per person per week.
Okay. And then, at some time, would like to go through vehicles, because we now have more vehicles than we have people working in the department.
So vehicles, so part of why you saw the list today is because you asked for it last week, which is...
No, I appreciate that, I was just saying, I have money.
But capital, the fleet is capital, so we wouldn't normally have been discussing that today anyway, so you've gotten this document way in advance at the CIP, so you will have plenty of time to go over.
My position clearly is, you know, reduce vehicles, because vehicles cost more money than you think they cost. And then also for the formatting going forward, this fiscal year 19, estimated actual is not working for me, because you went straight line from the beginning of the year through February, but everybody's saying we got a lot of expenses and we're really going to spend it. So I see an increase from estimated actual, mean estimated actual, what do you really think it's going to be fiscal year end? And there's a delta of 418. So then I, either I want to see a better estimated actual or bridge, our schedule between, you know, the million-two and the million-six, so that I can see and understand.
I will be happy to bore the Subcommittee with all of the reasons why we chose to do it this way instead of the other way this first year, but I assure you, we'll be happy to do it the other way next year.
That's all, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you all for the presentation.
May I ask one more question? Sorry.
Nope.
Oh, be quick, be quick, be quick. For efficiency purposes, we are discontinuing self-installed sidewalks. That $71,000 that we're saving is nice, but that doesn't concern me. I'd really like to emphasize that when you come back with the capital improvement, if you might even be able to help us to see where that labor cost from the folks no longer putting the sidewalks in, the specific areas where you expect to then be using them on capital improvement? Is that doable?
They will be, the maintenance, so they will, I've shifted some of them in two different places, the maintenance, that can provide that.
That'll be really helpful, and that'll make us feel good about the move over. Thank you. So I'm hearing generally no changes to this budget?
Are we going to do any public comment?
Yes, yes. Coming up. Good, okay. Reach in communications or public writing, distribute it?
I think Mr. Regan actually wants to talk about the proposed Public Works budget.
Oh, next is public comment.
Then before we conclude that and go to public comment, if that's what we do, then I'd like to revisit that question that I had earlier about the CIP presentation. So it will likely be lengthy. It is all discretionary, it is all your decision on what you want to fund this year and what you want to hold off for the next years. We, again, have slated to discuss it at the Friday, April meeting, which is April 26th. This was the meeting that went long last year. I believe we were missing Councilmember Udi for that. I don't know if that means it'll go longer this year or not, I'm just saying, it did go long last year. Do you want to keep it at one meeting? Would you like to make it two meetings to avoid exhaustion? I know that by the end of that particular evening, it was very difficult to evaluate everything that came before you, and much as I know you and we don't want to have more meetings than we need to, if we're going to get to that same point of exhaustion, it would be preferable to have two meetings. So it's at your discretion.
I just ask you, how many, how many CIPs do we have? Approximately from everybody?
Well, let's see, I think there's 98 projects and capital equipment sheets, probably 40 capital equipment, maybe 50 capital improvement. Not all, obviously, are things that we're going to be asking you to fund next year. And as what we did last year, I think we wound up with perhaps a handful of capital equipment purchases and maybe about 20 capital improvements. So probably be looking at something similar to that. But each program or project or purchase has a descriptor attached to it so that we can understand, that anyone can understand what's entailed in it, and then the recommended year that the council could consider funding it. At your prior priority initiative meeting, you did make an observation that you were sort of comfortable in the $4 million a year range for capital improvements, and that's something we'll take into account when we bring you a capital improvement program. Capital equipment is a little bit different sort of duck in that you buy it and then you're done. So you can certainly make that one 100% complete very quickly by just purchasing something. So there are some requests that we did not have last year for capital equipment that are new and that you might want to spend some time speaking of. Many of the items are the same ones for last year, they've either moved forward a year or they've stayed, you know, in the outer years just so that we keep track of it. So it won't be as daunting of a task as last year, because last year was the first year you saw it in this sort of format, and so it should be straightforward.
So just to take a step back, which with capital improvement plan is a listing, as best as we know, of everything that we might want to do. There are some projects that stay on a CIP forever, because you don't want to lose track of them, but they don't really end up important enough to fund. So the way that the document will be presented to you is there'll be some portion of those that we're going to recommend funding in year one, because now year one is next year, it moves up every year, and the rest of them will be unfunded next year. You don't need to make decisions on what year, other than year one, to fund them, it's just they're either going to go forward next year or they're not going to go forward. But you're going to want to look at those recommendations, and the Public Works Director will be making some recommendations to you in terms of prioritization. So you want to take a look at the ones that we're recommending in year one and decide if you agree that you do want to fund them, or if not, we'll move them out of year one. And then you might want to look at the ones that we weren't initially recommending you fund in year one, you might want to bring some of them up. I think it's true, it won't be as daunting as last year in some ways, because at least you've seen it before. Of course, when you saw it, it was about 11:00 PM after several hours, and so, again, I think some recollection problems from last year set in, at least for me. So that's why we're asking the question.
So Councilmember Trubisky, do you prefer to do it in one setting or two?
So would the first be at the last meeting and then the second going into next month? Or setting, if you were to do two, one before the last meeting?
We would essentially pull you again. The extra challenge that we have is going anything closer means that we need to get done sooner, but since it's already gone through the Public Safety Commission, that probably is easier. The further into the next month we push it, the harder time our finance director has getting everything ready for your budget presentation. getting everything ready for your budget presentation in May. So my preference would be just immediately sooner, but we would have to see when you are.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No preference.
Councilmember.
I, I'm, just so I could balance things off of each other, sometimes I like to get it done all in one meeting. But I'll, I'll allow for you guys to make the decision as to whether or not you can sit here for five hours and listen to it.
Councilmember Yudi.
One, two-hour meeting.
You weren't here at 1:30 in the morning, Councilman.
Then we can start at 10:00 too.
I think, as since this is, I, I take the concept that it's better to deal with it at one meeting, because we are dealing with a certain amount of money and we like to keep that limited, and so to spread it in between two, it seems unfair for other departments, you know, because we might be, if we spent so much the first meeting, then we might not be giving equal balance, so I think it's better to take it all and really deal with it all and try to figure out what's the best way for the city to operate and what the best function is for our add-ons and so on. So I would advocate for one and just, we'll go for the marathon and hopefully it'll be a half.
Okay, I concur, I prefer, you know.
Great, and we'll talk about it on April 26th. Thank you for that moment, I think we're concluded on this item.
One, one question, is it our only thing to do?
Our only, well, except probably breakfast and lunch and tea time.
There will be two meals, right?
Oh, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and written communications or public writings distributed. Seeing none, public comments? Mr. Regan?
Hello, Regan, 44-year resident, I was part of the ADHAC Committee, which reviewed Public Works as well as Administration. I don't know what you have access to, but I guess I'm disappointed that there isn't more detail for you to make an intelligent decision on the dollar amounts. We assume there would be a significant reduction in personnel, not $120,000 savings, we were looking at maybe three-quarters of a million in savings. It seems to me, when you, you break down the activities of the department, you have parks and, and recreation, or parks and gardens, or whatever they call it, the director should be able to tell you what each of those people does every day. We did that for a month and found that they didn't do very much and that there could be a reduction. I don't understand why, when you look at this budget, that you don't say every morning somebody comes over and this is my job, right? I'm going to cut the grass, I'm going to do this, I'm going to go to Stoneman and so on. And it typically should be a daily activity or weekly activity. So that's one part of it, and that's probably seven or eight employees. You have another seven or eight employees that are involved in quote streets and sidewalks. It turned out, when we did our work, all seven or eight were working on two projects. One was painting traffic signals or something all month and, and doing something with some sidewalks at Lorraine Road. Now, as a practical matter, as the director indicates, if we're going to fix sidewalks, we typically use a contractor, we're not going to be grinding up the, the concrete and so on that goes in. But it seems to me that if you're going to make an intelligent decision about spending 20, in this case, I guess it's going to be seven or eight million dollars, this department represents about 50% of the budget for the non-safety budget of our, of our city, so it's a very, very important number. I just don't understand why the director cannot give you more detail about what these people do so you can make a decision as to whether it makes sense. When we looked at it, it didn't make sense, and we thought that there ought to be a significant reduction in the number of personnel, not $120,000 savings, something much more meaningful, and, as I'm finding out, we ought to really increase the service level. It took me three months to find someone to cut some weeds, it turns out cut, I would have preferred it be pulled, at Stoneman. Why should it take three months to do that? I don't know how you could make a decision on a $25 million budget based on the information that I listened to tonight. You have got to do more detailed information and the director should furnish it to you. I mean, it's fairness to the residents, why should we be subject to a $3 million safety tax, a million and a half or a million seven utility tax, when we know we could save a lot of money and reduce the taxation or apply it to some of these liabilities, which we really don't have on the books right now? You know, we're talking about 25 million in pension costs, it's really 75 million in costs. When you get into this capital budget, I'll try to put this in writing to all of you, and I hope that the director will do this, we have a couple million dollars of normal maintenance. It seems to me that is something that can be spelled out as to, and prioritized, as to what, how we're going to spend that money and why we're going to spend that $2 million, say, on Plymouth Road versus someplace else. I think, and I assume that's what the director's going to be telling you, and for all this deferred maintenance, which is $50 million, and I'm going to also vindicate, since I'm going to preach a little bit, it's going to increase. If we continue making these kinds of decisions the way we are, we're going to have 55 million up the road, because we're continuing to spend money and get no benefit from it, where we could be using the money to reduce that deferred maintenance. I just don't get it. I, I've done hundreds of budgets in my life, I'm a CPA by background, and, and I've been on boards, as you are, in essence, doing right now, and I just don't know how you can make it a decision without additional information from each of the department heads. And it's easy. What are these people doing every day? And how, and then how many hours are they spending on given activities? Then you can make some decision. I was given the same information about comparing it to a park or a, a, in our case, in the prior, we were comparing it to Huntington Library and saying that, you know, the cost of maintaining Huntington Library on a per-acre basis, we could apply that to, to Lacy Park, which is absolutely ridiculous. But it's easier than that. You should be able to get information on what employees they're doing every day, just as we did, but on a macro basis. Then you can make a decision, hey, right now, last year, we are, we were spending $70,000 a month, and I, I know you've heard this before, and that's what, on just primarily Lacy Park maintenance, 70,000, yes, you have Stoneman, and you have a little bit over in the, you know, in, in the front of the library and that sort of thing, but basically you're spending 70. My guess is the number is higher this year. How, it defies logic. Think about your port gardener who's coming in there and you're paying him 150 or 200 a month, and we're paying our people, essentially, the cost to us is $90,000 a year for each of one of these employees in the Public Works Department. Figure it out. It was like, it was like 18 or 17 people divided into whatever the personnel costs were, and an amount of $90,000 a person. That's why we felt that you could reduce, and it didn't have to be a significant, some of it through attrition, which evidently is happening now. We have four, a couple open spaces, and the director said we're not going to fill them. The car maintenance, the vehicle maintenance.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We had, I'm going to quit, here's going to, we had, our recommendation is that we either, at a minimum, reduce, reduce it by one person, that would save you close to $90,000, or outsource the entire activity. Shouldn't you know what they spend their time on? Most of the work has to go elsewhere. You get transmissions and that sort of thing, they primarily change some brakes and do some very minor work. We looked at that, we concluded that you really ought to reduce the number of personnel in, in the, in the vehicle maintenance area. I don't get it. You're, this is taxpayer money, it's my money. You've got to have additional detail before you make that, it just drives me nuts. We delivered that report December 2016, nothing's happened. You know, and I've been at this for about four years, and I'm getting a little older, I don't know much more time I could wait, and finally, the mayor indicated we're going to reduce costs by 10%, that was the goal for this coming year. Could somebody tell me why that isn't, it can be done? If we, each of the departments, I, I could get into a lot of detail, but each of the departments, if they can't find a minimum of 10%, we got one heck of a problem. And there's been no discussion of it. If it has, I haven't seen anything in a paper. What happened to it? We got to find out who we're representing. We're representing taxpayers, and what we do on a, on a micro level, which is San Marino, is happening at the, at, at the national level, and that's why we have $23 million or whatever the number is of deficit. It's got to start here, and it's incumbent. I don't like eliminating people, you know, it's just terrible, but, but, we have an obligation to run the city in a cost-effective manner and provide the best services for our people. And I'm telling you, from my perspective and a lot of others, it isn't happening. And it's incumbent on everybody in this room, in my view, to make it happen, and it ain't that hard. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll look into it. Any other public comments? Seeing none, meeting adjourned. Thank you.